Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
All right. It is 6 o'clock and this is the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District, AKA Athens-Crafton. And we are now meeting at 6:00 PM at the Crafton Elementary School and I'm calling this meeting officially to order. There. Before we adjust the agenda, I have introductions and they'll start to my immediate left, walked around, then we'll introduce the people on screen.
Okay, I'm Harold Norris, Athens.
Lynn Morgan, Athens. Kathy Siana-Goodwin, Crafton.
Jack Dwyer, Crafton.
Andy Haas, Superintendent Schools.
Angelo, introduce yourself.
Angelo Cardier, Principal at Crafton Elementary School.
Krista, introduce yourself.
Krista.
You're breaking out there, Krista. Hopefully you have clarity.
I have a computer, so I'm trying to link them up.
Got it.
You might need to turn the video off just to make the audio work.
Yeah, Krista, did you hear that? We, you know, as much as we like seeing you, we need to hear you if at all possible. Hardy, are you there? I see, it looks like Nancy's line's open. Well, we will note the potential presence of Hardy. I'm not sure what the situation is tonight. And I can't read what else is underneath here.
He's on his way.
Oh, he is. Okay, we weren't sure if he was coming tonight. And thank God.
There he is. There he is.
Hey, Captain, how are you doing?
Not there yet. I do think.
No, he's carefully walking in.
Yep, I missed that. And we have Nicole on Fact TV.
All right. So Hardy, introduce yourself.
I'm Hardy Merrill, Crafton.
There we go. And that's, and we'll note that Fact TV is on and that Nicole Alverna is on presumably taking wonderful notes. And there we are. Adjustments to the agenda, are there any from anybody? Hearing that.
I'd like to be able to just review a little bit about the playground.
So let's put down in full business, a 6B playground status. And also in 7A, did we get the accompanying documentation on all those? Did I get to everybody tonight? I don't, I actually, because I didn't look to see if it was in material sent to the elementary school district.
All the different policies?
Yeah.
I don't know if we actually sent them or if they've been posted online. They have been posted online.
No, they've been posted online. I don't know if people had a chance.
Hi, it's Nicole. I did send them out.
Okay. Well, then, did people have a chance to look at them? Because it's, you know, a small book's worth of material.
Was that the?
This is the Federal Child Nutrition Act and the student homeless, who are homeless and.
The reason I'm asking is because I don't know if I should pass this over or if we want to, we wanted to do with this this evening. These are mostly required, but I don't know if I need to.
Can you go over if this someone's.
I didn't get my email today, so.
All right. Now, would this be the first meeting of these or?
Yeah.
Well, this will be effectively for us the second because we're typically the first and so I suppose we'll technically have the district reapproved. Right.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Really, maybe newer or business. It's on the amended lease because of the addition of.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. I forgot. I think that's still floating around, isn't it? Okay, yeah, so let's put that as a 7, a new 7A because we'll deal with that first and then we'll give Kathy and whoever needs you a couple more minutes to look at all these new business policy items.
So 7A is.
7A is lease modification. And I'm trying to guess, you'll speak to it. And then the current 7A becomes a 7B. And I think that takes care of us all. So, any other items? All right. So communication and public comment. Do we have any, anything from anybody anywhere?
I don't see anything.
All right. I will note for the record that we did have the, I did finally send around the.
Whiteboard.
Whiteboard notes. And we'll have those as basis for some discussions in future meetings, but yeah. Better late than never. Sorry about that. That moves us on to 5, review and approve minutes from October 13th. Did people look at those, see those?
Yes, we did.
See anything that was arrived from your perspective?
I make emotional improvements.
All right. Any discussion? Then without, unless there's an objection, is there any objection? Then we will consider them approved. Full Business for Discussion Action, preliminary budget discussion. I'm going to, Jim's not here or online. Do we want to, do we have any further updates on where we stand?
With the budget discussion? So we had the finance meeting, the committee met yesterday, right?
Yes.
I can't remember where.
Yes, it was.
Do you want to speak to that or do you want me to keep going?
I'll speak to it.
You're much more articulate tonight.
Yesterday, at the WNSU meeting, we had a finance committee meeting looking at the WNSU budget. And we made some reductions of that budget, close to probably half a million dollars. And then we're going to add back a bus probably, which we're not sure how much that's going to be, but probably about $100,000. All sell and took set and told. They're working on the assessments that's going to go to everybody. But basically, Crafton-Athens, as near as I could tell, so far, we're holding pretty steady with what we did last year as far as our assessment. Some of the assessments are going up in other districts, but we're pretty much holding our own. And I expect that to continue based on the headcount. And we also did review a headcount sheet yesterday, which is, as far as the budget goes going forward for us, I think it's very important that we get an understanding of what is anticipated to be in our 7th and 8th grade next year and our kindergarten through 6th grade here next year, not this year.
Right.
And if you, if I looked at some of the numbers, we have right now at the school in Bellis Falls, we have three kids that are going to be going out of the 8th grade and four kids going up from the 7th grade to the 8th grade. But we're also got 10 kids from our 6th grade that are going to be going in. So the tuition number is going to be very significant that we have to calculate for this budget to make sure it's a good number. We also have, I know, I looked back a little bit and I find that we had three kids in the 7th grade that were going to Green Mountain.
Right.
And I don't know if there's any others. I know there was one that was going to Putney that graduated, I believe she was in the 8th grade.
Right, right.
And I don't know whether there are any others or not, but they'll have to be taken into account as well.
Traditionally, we have sent significantly, over the last 10 years, we've sent significantly more kids to Green Mountain than we have to the middle school. And I don't know whether that trend is going to continue. We send more now than we used to because we were, there was a long time where the number going to middle school was zero.
Yeah, so we, Angie and Sarah sent me over already.
They did send that though?
Yeah, I want to, we have, trying to get it from all the different schools, but it looks like, like currently, you've got two 8th graders that are at Green Mountain.
Okay.
A 9th grader, two 10th graders, and three 11th graders that are at Green Mountain. But really, the 8th grade is all you care.
So.
I don't, essentially for money.
Yeah.
And then at Leon and Gray, you have two 8th graders.
I forgot about that. That's right.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
At Compass, you have one 8th grader. And then currently at the middle school, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4 8th graders and you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 8th graders.
Okay.
So these were just sent over to me this morning.
I'm confused. Middle, you said middle school? We have four 8th graders.
No, four, I think it's four 7th graders and five 8th graders.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I knew what you were saying.
Yeah. And then I know Angie's on the, I mean, I can pull it, Angie, if you know, like, the current 6th grade and.
Yeah, the, are you talking about the current 6th graders that we have?
There's 10 of them.
What's your, what's your question about it?
10 correct?
Yes.
All right. This is just assuming people are going, or they, we know everybody's going. Krista, your hands up. And by the way, we're so small, you can just butt in if you want.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
My question, this goes off of, I think, what Angela and Andy were just saying. Know which 6th grade are going to be tuitioned out? Is.
The term here, see, everybody and, yeah, all this, we're trying to figure out how many that are going to be tuitioned out because we have, those we have to pay for per body, if you will, put it crassly. And so they're not part of the fancy formula that we use to calculate cost and recovery for the elementary school. So when we have big bumps, and now that we're small again, we have that wild variation that we used to, used to drive us crazy. That's fact. And so, you know, some years, you know, very small groups of 7th and 8th graders, in other years, we've had 20 and the budget has reflected that. So that often makes a real difference on people's tax bills.
I was just asking, I, cool choice to pray, I went to pray for middle school. And I didn't make my, about where I was going to school until like, very close to graduation. So I was just wondering when we would have that information. It seems variable.
So typically, the, in the, in the springtime, the students in the 6th grade go on like field trips to those schools and then after they've done that, they decide. So it's not, it probably won't be until the spring.
Makes sense.
And often, we may have families that tell us that they want to go to school A.
Right.
And then at the last minute, they make a decision to go to school B.
Yeah.
The point is it will be 10 of them going somewhere.
Right. That's the point, is that you need to.
Budget budget.
You need to anticipate that 10.
Yeah.
And potentially 10 could go outside of our district. I think that's a.
Well, yeah, I think we tend to work on an assumption, just for budgeting purposes, of between 10 and 12, partly because if you're trying to, if you're trying to cushion for a surplus, that's where you do it.
Better have enough than not.
Right. Because, so you always want to make sure you don't get caught by surprise. I think it's helpful. Anything further on this?
Well, I think for today, until Jim gets, you know, a little bit further down the path here.
Right.
I think that's sufficient.
Well, something I brought up last night, and would appreciate bringing up here too, is when we all have something ready for sort of community review and, so that we're not doing just an up or down vote, but people get to have input, it'd be, if we can get something postable, you know, and I know we're not ready yet, but when we are ready, I'd like to be able to do that at that point. Yeah, we're, you know, I think Mr. Kibby's kind of keeping the, our feet to the fire that we're going to have, you know, a first preliminary draft, full draft to the SU board by the end of November. Well, you know, and since I meet Mr. Fuss about this in past years, I think he's kind of tried to prove, prove that it's easy to do if you get the right person doing it.
Yeah, so I think, I think once, because the way Mr., you know, Jim Mazina has really built his system so that as, as we're upgrading, like staffing is, you know, as he says, what, 78% of our budget, right?
Yeah.
So he can pump those numbers in and we're, we're working already. He already has like a lot of your.
Right.
Costs already out there.
Yeah.
And then you can plug in a couple of numbers at the last minute and we'll, we'll move pretty quickly. So I'm really excited about, you know, where we are.
I had been quite, Michelle Tallis asked me about if we would be, because not all years have we provided any information to town budgets. But my, but we did last year. And I'd like us to, with your agreement, at least try to make sure that we have a, that functions-based budget and the usual notes in both the Athens and Crafton Town reports in addition to whatever we put in the combined SU thing.
A lot of the idea of actually just, you know, posting the draft budgets up there, right? Like, what do we hide? We're not trying to.
Yeah.
Let's get it out there and people can look at it.
Well, since we don't have town meetings where people can modify stuff on the floor, this is the best way to deal with that, it seems. All right.
If I could ask Angelo a question.
Jim.
Do we have any numbers, maybe way too early, because that, how many kindergarteners will be coming in next year too or?
Yeah, no, we, we have that numbers, or those numbers. There are, I want to say off the top of my head, we have 13 next year coming in. So, so we're losing.
There you go.
We're losing nine and we're getting 13.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I remember a number between 7 and 12 when we were talking about this a while ago.
That's good.
There you go. That's, that's good.
And Leon and Gray are going to be open next year?
Yep.
There was rumor that it was going to.
They voted to keep it open.
Yeah. So. And I don't think it was that close, as it turns out.
No. I mean, it was pretty, pretty robust to keep it open.
Yeah.
So.
All righty.
So I think Mr. Anton is leaving.
He is.
He's superintendent. That's the latest I.
Bill, Bill, I heard from Bill like a couple months ago that was on. So I guess we're done on 6A. We can move on to 7A and the first item.
No, you got 6B.
6B, sorry. Playground, playground. My apologies. We accept.
Angela, I asked Andy, I think before you got on, about the different forms that we need. And he says he has all of those and he'll get them to us. Can we get him?
Well, I need to sit with you and fill them out.
Oh, okay. We're working on it.
I have the access.
Okay. So we've got that question answered.
And then I have already also emailed our legal.
Okay.
About the ADA question, so hopefully tomorrow I'll have an answer on that.
All right. And because that, one of the big things we talked about at the last meeting was the surplus, what you put down.
Right.
And none of us could find anything that said, you know, this is what you want. Every, it was.
Vague.
Very vague.
And I, and I think it's because it's, it's talking about equal access.
Yeah.
So if they, if they get real specific, you might leave out a group.
Yeah.
So you wish there was a minimum, right?
Right.
That you could say, like, you got to make sure you have this.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, I think, a little thumb that I've always used is, you have to have a surface that, you know, perhaps a, a person who uses a wheelchair or some type of walker can reasonably get to the apparatus.
Right.
You know, unassisted. And so, so that's where like wood chips become, you can't do that, so you put a path in, right?
Yeah.
And then that path has to have some kind of, can't just be some dirt path, you have to have some way to.
You end up just being, figuring out, big old rubber mat with a, with a artificial turf type of surface.
Right. And so I think, you know, our legal team will get back to this real.
Okay. Because there's so many different ones out there and they all had, each one of them listed the problems with them. And one of the best ones, the problem was it was so expensive, most people couldn't use it.
I think a lot of this has been, particularly in Vermont, is they don't want to, they don't want to force people to, to, in a straitjacket, but their attempt to be accommodating just means that they give you nothing you can use as a reference point for best practices.
We can put in a, you know, an 80 by 100 artificial pitch, you know, and line it and then you can, you know, put some lights up and you can run some games out.
You know, I, I think cornhole would be the big.
Yeah.
All right.
You have to think about your fall zones.
Right.
We're not going to fall off a piece of equipment, getting on their weight and height, the cushion underneath.
Well, now you know why.
And I, with the wood chip we have, the depth we need for that, you know, everything varies depending on what the surface is.
Do you get rubber pellets and rubber chips and?
The reason I'm so real sure that I don't have to think about this is because I have people that will have it for me. The only thing I ask you guys is if you can get this nailed down before early December, because I'd like to be able to, as I said, I'm obsessed with being able to say in our report, we've got this handled, you know, by the way, if there are ancillary causes or what.
Well, once we can get connected with somebody that can guide us, we can get it nailed down.
All right.
Because the research that I'm able to do and it seems like everybody else, we can't get any information.
If you need me to jump in and, you know, to let me know.
Okay. Well, the legal help should probably.
Because the town is doing the elevator, we had to go through the 8A stuff. But it's the Division of Fire Safety, Springfield on Mineral Street, and the guy's name is Landon Wheeler. Contact.
Landon Wheeler.
So he's the person that if you wanted any questions about your playground or safety issues.
What's his last name?
Landon Wheeler.
Wheeler, thank you.
And his number is 02-369-0949.
Thank you for that, Captain.
Okay, dokey. So 6A, 6B, 7, the new 7A?
Yep.
That's yours, is that? No, no, that's.
Yeah, the lease, the lease.
Kathy, did you leave?
Please, you asked me.
About the lease modification or something?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. I spoke to Bill today and a survey has to be done of that area. We're waiting for Devo to do that.
Did they do the survey? I thought that was what they did.
It was a guess.
Well, a guess.
No, Bill did it, measured it.
Okay.
And so.
Yes.
And then you were, did a sketch, but it's not an official document.
No, Devo's going to work that.
Okay, so what's our timeline?
I think you have 180 days, starting, it was September 1st, whenever they did the thing.
All right.
But it has to be amended and you have, you said 180 days and you've got some time now, but.
I'd like to be able to do it before we have the district meeting so we can, I don't think this is an obligation to have it on the district meeting because we're not adding any dollars, but it's still a contract and I think we should have.
Right, it should be amended to them.
Yeah, and we could, we could do it there and like sign it then or my successor to you, whatever the deal is back at that point.
Why do we need a survey of the playground area since?
No, playground, no. I thought it was a playground, it's this piece out here.
You know, we took that look. The, when the original line for this building was done, it was done improperly. And so you literally have, if the line instead of where the fence now is.
Yeah.
Was literally about a foot and a half into the concrete of the back steps right here.
Yes.
So as a consequence, you know, when we try to get the, try to get that walkway fixed.
Yeah.
Guess we could fix it a little nicer. The, we had to buy, we had to change the ownership of the land and went through the whole thing with our, with our neighbor to get that done and she was halfway more accommodating.
She basically gave it to us.
Yeah, she really did. And we, at some point, we did send her a letter of appreciation. In any case, that's what this is about.
So Devo's just going to include that parcel.
Right, and essentially.
Onto our, onto our catch.
Yeah, it was going to be, basically the kids are going to be pulling out that door or having lunch on the other side. And it was on her property. So there's a liability issue.
Yep.
Yeah.
The other thing that happened in a positive way is that walkway that we pair.
Yeah.
By the town.
Yeah. And at some point, you know, put fancy marble on it and Kathy's going to buy lights for the, to go down there. Then I get that right, right?
It is, it is fixed now and the water is going away from it, so.
That's all, all big plus. Yeah, that's good. All right. So that's that item. And now we're on to the review and proof policies. Now, I've seen them way too many times. But Kathy, do you, are you comfortable doing these tonight? I just want to make sure that everybody is comfortable because I am, but I don't want to.
I mean, I.
You know, I don't want to vote or.
I heard the discussion and I do have it because I know, I don't know if I read all through them, but I'm familiar with them.
All right.
They're all legal requirements.
Yeah, they're all ones that we're.
Right. And just for those who might watch Fact TV at some point, these policies, and they have new alphanumeric, because we have, we're fixing ours, is what's called proficiency-based, not bases by the way, based graduation requirements. So it's D1, and that needs to be tweaked for this. Grade advancement, retention, promotion, acceleration of students is D1A, sentry of subset. Animal dissection.
I thought that was interesting.
This is, this is all.
I watched yesterday. I watched yesterday, did you?
There is, this is always an issue every year.
Yeah, they must have questioned, what kind of animals?
Well, well.
I don't understand.
Well, let me, let me say what I didn't say in the meeting.
Same ones I did in high school.
Well, no, no, that's a true. The Crafton, the Bellis Falls Union High School, when Dr. Steiner ran the anatomy class, they dissected a, a lamb, I believe it was a.
Wow.
And so it was, it was like a pit in that class. Refrigeration was an issue at one point. So I don't.
It's a little important with.
I, I, you don't forget these things.
Mine and ours were all male.
Yeah, on the other hand, it's probably.
Probably was someone from down under the farm.
Was one of the reasons why we place so many kids in vet and nursing programs, I swear. Anyway, so that's what that was all about. D35, B35, this actually sometimes is an issue, and I don't recall much discussion about it the other night, animals in the classroom. The reason why it's an issue is because.
It's with allergies.
Well, also because Westminster used to bring whams. Yeah, because it has a sheep thing. Whams into the classroom, huh?
What's for dinner, Jack?
For years.
Why?
Don't ask me.
Well, I thought there was an educational reason.
Well, hopefully it's an educational reason, but they did that for kindergarten and we did some funky thing for a couple years. Krista, they brought animal, they brought an animal into the year before you started or the year you started. Do you remember any of that?
Yeah, they, I was, they brought in animals. I think it were local ones though. I like from, from the sheep farm down over the, down over the hill.
Right. Well, I was, I was explaining this to, to Andy, you couldn't quite believe we did this type of stuff back then.
I believe it.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I'm shocked.
That, that is not as supportive as it could be, but, uh, anyway.
Animals, though, we had people bringing animals for show and tell, one time I brought in all my baby ducks, another time they brought in reptiles.
So, and I, I vaguely recall a horse, a, a, a foal at one point, but I won't go there.
I think also around, um, service animals, because, uh, a lot of, you know, a lot of folks, um, are entitled under ADA um, to have comfort animals, but they're actually not service animals, and, and there's a certain, um, there's a certain level of training that goes into service animals. And, and so to ensure the animal is, um, compliant with all the things that needs to be to be a service animal, you wanna make sure you really are doing that, because, because it might be a comfort animal, but that actually might end up harming or doing some other damage type of stuff, and so, so I think it, it's, it's there for that purpose also, is to, is to protect, so that if you need to have a service animal, which you're under, you know, ADA, you, you could be entitled to. But there are, you know, now people out there who have like, um, comfort alligators, and I'm not exaggerating.
I already do.
You know, so.
The South, the South. Does this restrict us in any way in terms of, I don't know if we still do the.
No, because it allows, it allows for the superintendent, in this policy, it allows for the superintendent to give permission. So if Krista wanted to bring her ducklings in, we could give permission for Krista to bring her ducklings in, um, or you want to bring your lamb, we could.
We, we, we haven't done, done the school hamster thing in a very long time.
But it does, it does provide us those, those, um.
So if you had a, um, nature program that we're bringing in critters to help you, you'd still do that.
Well, the hamster, the hamster program helped that anatomy program, because, you know, they rarely made it through the years, never mind. Okay.
What about, what about fish?
Again, it allows for the discretion of the superintendent to provide that, so if a classroom wanted to have fish and, and do that, I mean.
Get a chicken within.
They just, they just gotta make sure we, you know, we, we, I guess given our blessing to it, so that's all.
Piranhas are no, goldfish are no, okay? Alright, um, and, uh, moving on, policy on non-discriminatory mascots, let's go branding, this is the, uh, business of the Brattleboro Rebels type of stuff, which we don't have, although I still hold out that as much as I like.
Leland and Gray Rebels. Brattlebrows are cool.
Yeah, well, as much as I like, uh, the, uh, the Panthers, I still have a warm spot in my heart for the earlier mascot, the mercenaries, for owing it, for the money. I would love that, but do that as it may. Um, C nine, child nutrition, well, act wellness policy, and the homeless policy, which is C thirteen. Uh, yes.
I have a question on the graduation requirements, when I read through that, I didn't see anything about credits.
So, um, right, because it's not really about credits anymore, so in, in Vermont, I mean, we have a hybrid system at our high school, so you have credits and you have, you have proficiency graduation, um, but theoretically, it's a student has to meet the proficiency, um, and by meeting proficiencies, you're also earning credits, but it's changed, the system's changed to this proficiency, so you have to show proficiency as opposed to just earning credits. So, um, the other piece, just real quick, some of these, like, you know, are, are very specific more to a high school than they are to, say, Grafton Elementary. Um, but what we're trying to look at is every district supporting all these, because if this just lives in the high school, sometimes it gets lost, you know, so, so just trying to get a, a, a supporting, but then if Grafton needed something very specific, because of Grafton, Grafton could still adopt another policy just specific for Grafton.
And that's acceptable to colleges that a, a child might be going on to?
Oh, for proficiencies?
Right.
Yeah, a lot of college, I mean, and that's why we still have.
Because often they just wanna look at credits, how many credits.
That's why we still have a hybrid system, that's why we still have a hybrid system, but I just, just having had a child go, um, through that and come in out of another state that had gone to proficiency base, um, had a lot of conversations with, um, colleges and universities that are well aware of it. What typically happens is you send along your proficiency report card, but then you also have to send along your, your course of studies and, and then also your, how you're, how you meet proficiencies, so you send all this and the schools kinda look at it and they, they migrated over to their system. And they've always done that anyway, so we might say, a, a child comes out of, you know, Bellas Falls Union High School with a, uh, with a, a four point two GPA because they got all this stuff, well, when you go to college, the colleges have ranked Bellas Falls Uni, however they've done it, so an A out of Bellas Falls Union High School may not be the equivalent of an A out of Leland and Gray or an A out of Burlington High School. They, they've already weighted.
So, so do the students get a GPA?
Yes, they, so they get a GPA, they get credits, and they get proficiencies.
I, I think some of this has to do with kids that may need accommodations, but it's all, and, and kids that wanna graduate early who essentially have done the work but may not have accumulated.
No, well, Jack, Vermont does not years ago move to a proficiency base.
The, the, the law that's.
And it's for all students.
Right.
It, it benefits, it, it can benefit the whole range of students, um, but it tends to also, it does benefit a lot of students who maybe in the past would struggle to, um, meet this, you know, the, did you get your homework in on time, did you do all these things? So how can you show proficiency and understanding and mastery of a subject as opposed to, uh, uh, maybe another way? I have seen students who have been able to demonstrate mathematics through music. I have been able to see students demonstrate the art competencies or the art, the, the art pieces of your traditional art class.
Right.
Through graphic computers. So it's taking the standards and then saying, okay, if this is what proficiency looks like, how, how do you meet that proficiency? How can you prove that you understand this? And, and another way I explain it is with a tangible, um, let's say we're gonna land an airplane, right? So if you come down and you go to land that airplane, and, and you, and you hit and one wheel collapses underneath you and you slide, is, is that an A, a B, a C, a D? What is that? And if you got a D, in a, in a traditional grading standard, you get credit and you move on. I don't know if I want a pilot who landed a plane, you know, so it's proficiency, right? How many times does it take you to land that plane to show that you understand how to land that plane? And, and, and so that's what proficiencies are about, is demonstrating you mastered and understand material as opposed to just, did you turn in the work and did you get the job done?
Well, there was a kid a few years ago that, uh, got held up because he didn't have their art credit despite the fact that they had won a jury trial for sculpture in New York and it also entered, uh, it also entered something, uh, in, in drawing, you know? Hard to say they're not proficient in art.
Right, I, when I was graduating from college, I had, you, everyone had to take speech one oh one, required. I took argument, not speech one oh one, I took argument. And there was another guy who was a debate major, but never took speech one oh one, and they weren't gonna let us graduate. And they told us.
So you can argue that.
So they told us, the last, um, test out is in ten minutes across campus. So we ran across campus and got there, and we're standing there to go in, and someone turned to us and said, so what did you prepare your speech on? Five-minute prepared speech you were supposed to have, so I was, I said I'd go first to get it over with, and I stood up and I gave a five-minute speech on how stupid it was that I had to give a five-minute speech. And, and the grad assist instead, I made a great argument for why debate and, and, and argument students don't need to take speech one oh one, you know? But, you know, so, was I proficient in being able to give a speech? Yes. Did I check the box? No. And so that's, that's how proficiencies are really changing the landscape, but it's sloth.
Well, and, and actually, in some ways, it's, it's good for elementary and middle schools, because there's always in the accusation that kids get passed on page on their age cohort rather than whether or not they've done the work. And I think it's reasonable to say that elementary schools should hit certain, you know, certain levels of accomplishment, it's just they can't, and there's been no, there's either, there's a sign that accommodations haven't been identified or somebody hasn't done the job, and either case, that's important for us.
Andy, where does the, uh, the volunteer work hours, is that still a part of that proficiency thing? Where the, the student has to give so many hours of volunteerism or?
You know, I, I.
The work cut it?
I'd have to give back to you on, I don't. Go ahead, Krista.
There's a C, the required community service, and they also do. And they have to.
So there is a senior project they still have to do, um, I thought I had heard somewhere that the, the community service was not a requirement anymore, but I'll.
I don't, I think that's still on.
I've had some kids call me.
Right.
And see if they can do something for the church, I know there's a lot of kids who are.
Yeah, I, I, it was, at least my last year, it was still on the street.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think that necessarily means, you know, that, I think this is more that if you're not, if you don't meet proficiency, you can have that community service, you can have, uh, that, uh, senior project, and you're still gonna have trouble graduating if you're not ready to graduate. Um, in the interest of time, are there any further questions? And I would entertain a motion to consider all these for approval, uh, in a group, unless it's, uh.
I move that we accept these policies as approved.
Alright.
I second it.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, I'll call the question, we'll begin with, uh, we'll begin with our remote member. Krista, what say you?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Rev?
Aye.
We got them passed. Uh, we're now on to director's comments, and we'll start with you, Harold.
What do you mean?
Uh, Lynn?
Good meeting.
Kathy?
No, I'm glad we're moving on to, um, some success with the playground, and, uh, Kath's coming up, uh, our Thanksgiving dinner on November tenth.
I'm grateful for mentioning that. Marty?
I'm good.
Krista?
None.
Alright, day of the next meeting, do, are we anticipating meetings, uh, prior to the fourth Thursday of November, uh?
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate it, um.
Unless you're like gonna be ready for the stuff.
I did, I did. I, I don't, I, again, I think, uh, our next S U meeting, we set for, because we did it yesterday, I can't remember.
We did it for the.
The sixteenth or something like that. We're not gonna have anything before that.
Okay, then, then let's, uh, let's set it for the fourth Thursday of November at six P M. at the Grafton Elementary School. Uh, Krista, yes?
That's Thanksgiving.
You're right, and I should know that. Then I will, I will circulate a, circulate among members and see if we can find a, a more appropriate date in November.
Yeah, because the third I have select. So, yeah.
I just got that important. Yeah?
I mean, the tenth is, is the, is the, the festival, um, yeah, um. You have the seventeenth.
But you sound like you might not be available.
Seventeenth I would be available, but the only thing I just don't know is if, um, Westminster's having it, but I could also pull in some.
Oui.
I could, we can split, I can send, ask Dad to go to one and, and I can come to the other.
Alright, well, let us provisionally say the seventeenth.
I, I would, I would recommend the seventeenth to you based on the fact that Thanksgiving.
Okay, then let's, let's put that in and keep your, uh, keep your, uh, now.
I'll look at the agenda and see.
We'll get the agenda, because you'll have to guess at it as opposed to the notices, apparently. Alright, uh, my, my, my.
Or if you could get me out by quarter of seven, then I could go to this.
We'll have, we'll have a chat. Um, Krista, did I get a director's comment from you?
Did you get a what?
I get a director's comment from you.
I don't have.
Alright, well, I'm just glad that we're gonna be able to get done in, uh, before quarter of the hour.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll send a, I'll start to write to Molly about how much longer you're gonna be. Uh, move to adjourn, someone?
I will do adjourn.
Uh, all, any objections?
None.
Hearing none, we are done for tonight, thank you all.
Yeah.